Everybody can sit back. This is a meeting, the committee of the whole, we don't do a prayer, we don't do a pledge. Very similar to a city council self-committee meeting, except that instead of just being free, we've got everybody here. We run it that way, and I think we're gonna start off with a presentation from the manager.
We call her on.
After we do the roll call, let's do the roll call first, roll call.
Councilor Leahy, here. Councilor Larry, here.
Councilor Mercia, here.
Councilor Melonazo, here.
Councilor Rourke, here.
Councilor Samaras.
Councilor Langer, here.
Councilor Elliott, here.
Mayor Kennedy, here.
A present.
So, the agenda, this is really, the purpose of this meeting really is to allow councilors to have more information regarding the options and also regarding the recommendation from the high school building committee. But there are nineteen people that have registered to speak this evening. So, after the presentation, we'll hear the nineteen people first, and then the city councils will speak. Some of you may have heard me on the radio, I think I said there was a three-minute limit, which is what the school committee role is, but for the city council, it's five minutes, so people will have five minutes. I'll be strict about the five minutes, just because there's nineteen people that have to speak. And I would just, I would just ask that everybody be respectful, there may be people that come to the microphone that have an opinion that's different than yours, and I would just ask that everybody be respectful of all the speakers. So with that, I'll open it up to the city manager to give his presentation, which will also include new information regarding the Colley site and new information regarding the modules. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and through you. What I think the best thing to do is we'll have Mr. Bell give a presentation on the four options that were advanced by the school building committee, and as part of that presentation, I would ask you to address the issue of modular classrooms and how many are anticipated to be necessary for each option that you discuss. And then after he presents that, I would then like to address the issue of the Article ninety-seven that just recently occurred relative to two parcels at the Colley site. So if we can start with you, Bob.
Okay. Through the mayor to the city council, I would like to just recap the four recommended building options from the school building committee, and beginning on the upper left here, we have the full renovation option, and as described previously, this option utilizes all of the existing school buildings except for the steam plant. This option is using six point four acres of the existing site. It's a, even though it's described as full renovation, it does require some additions onto the existing building, so it is relatively inefficient in that to get the right-sized programs in their right location, despite the building being oversized for the future program, there are some additions that are required. The total square footage ends up being six hundred and forty-one point six thousand square feet. Some of the pros that have been identified here are that its location, its proximity to city transportation, city services, certainly the mutual benefit of having the parking garage nearby is a great asset and solves the parking needs, so despite a very small site, it accomplishes many of those objectives. In any renovation, in any option that we proposed, they will fully meet the space needs, so that's the count and size of spaces that are part of the educational plan, educational program. Within these options, some of them better meet the full educational objectives, and so one example would be where the existing building is a renovation, and although we'll change the location, the size of all the spaces to create classroom clusters that have been identified and many other things in the educational plan, we know that it does, however, spread the fieldhouse with the cafeteria and the auditorium into separate buildings, and one of the overall objectives is to create more of a heart and a hub to the school. So, to some degree, it's different than the other options. Probably the biggest con with this option is that the freshmen remain isolated in a separate building down the street, and so that creates some, not only inefficiencies, but just concerns with the students having to travel on the street, multiple entrances entering the building to take advantage of other programs that are not housed within the freshman academy. The ideal and educational objective is to bring the freshmen onto the campus proper, still have them as a separate wing, but better connected to the whole school. We know that on the existing site, there is limited access to green space. Right now, there is use of a piece of property here that is for PE programs and for the ROTC. It's a relatively small green space, so it's one of the cons of this location. The existing building also has a number of windowless labs within it, and those would remain windowless. The solar orientation, as we've described in one of the previous meetings, is not ideal. It's not, the classrooms are not facing due north or south, so the daylight is not as controllable, it is not as energy efficient as would be preferred, and that leads to higher operating costs compared to many of the other options. This is anticipated to be a five-year duration with extensive modular classrooms. We would still, we are still in the process of studying where those modular classrooms might go, but we need to create swing space so that the renovations can occur in portions of the building. This is the lower, lowest-cost option when we look at the city share, approximated at a hundred and sixteen point five million. The second of the recommended options is an addition renovation, and here we can see, the white represents new construction. The fieldhouse has been taken down, and because of its inefficient size and shape, we're able to not only reconstruct a new fieldhouse, multi-story, but create a new freshman academy on the site. So, the former freshman academy building is now turned over to the city for alternative use. This uses six acres, and it is a bit more efficient, still a little bit inefficient using so much of the existing building at six hundred and twenty-four thousand square feet. It has all the same benefits of its proximity, its location. It does create a modest amount of green space, a quad within the center of the new construction that would be useful, even though it's not a dimensional field size for ROTC drills and some other outdoor learning or opportunities. This one meets a bit more of the educational objectives in that by having the freshmen closer and by reconstructing a new fieldhouse, we can try to organize that so that it is part of maybe a shared lobby or a heart to the school where the cafeteria might be located. But much of it is still renovation, and we would be reconstructing rooms within the walls as described previously. This overall is a four-year duration, and the correction that we're providing here tonight is that there are effectively no modular classrooms. We've been, I think some of the confusion comes in that we've been reluctant to say no, because we're very early at the feasibility stage, so we've liked to say few, fewer, no modular classrooms. But at this conceptual level, the idea is that the gymnasium would come down, so absolutely we would need an alternative for PE programs, and that may become both a modular, if you will, or inflatable roof-type structure that would need to be located elsewhere, but it also means creative programming of what the students might do for PE. But once you have solved that temporary program condition, you have now built a five-story academic wing, approximately sixty classrooms worth of space, so the concept is no modular classrooms on this, and that would be a correction from previous materials that were issued. The, this option is in the bottom third from the full range of ten options that we've shown as far as the cost to the city, and it's approximated at a hundred and thirty-five point six million city share. The next option, down on the lower left, is very similar to what we just looked at, but this explores if land could be acquired adjacent to the site. In this case, the new fieldhouse that was described would be built on that new parcel, so there would be no disruption, no temporary fieldhouse, no modulators of any kind really required at this conceptual level. The benefit of this option certainly is that it creates a significant green space that rivals the ones the students are already using now. We've also taken the liberty with more elbow room to solve the windowless classroom or lab issue that exists in the Lord Building, so light wells are knocked through the existing building, that's about six thousand square feet of program that would be taken out, but we have more room to put that six thousand square foot out in the expanded site, so we have solved the windowless issue. And it would be about a four-and-a-half-year duration, again, no modulators of any kind at this conceptual level, and previously it may, we may have reported that few were needed. The last option is all-new construction on a new site. The Colley site was looked at as the most viable, having tabular the amount of area that was appropriate to be able to build a new school. In this case, it's a four-story new construction of a school, and also provides sufficient site space for fields and for parking. And we know the parking count is something that we're still looking at, what that should be exactly, but with this concept, there is the ability to trade off green space for parking. It certainly was in the realm of a viable site. The acreage on this, we're reporting that twenty of thirty-four acres would be used, and that thirty-four acres we're counting does not include the Colley Stadium area. So the site itself is actually bigger if you include that, the Colley Stadium itself. This option ends up being pretty efficient at five hundred and seventy-one thousand gross square feet. In this case, the freshman academy, as well as the other nineteen-twenty-two in the Lord Building, are turned over to the city and reusable, which could be seen as a benefit. There are many benefits of all-new construction, and that includes just starting from scratch, being able to set up a building so that it's got all the right adjacencies, clusters that it's done in an efficient way. It, like all of these, would meet all the space needs, pretty much all the educational objectives, and have an ideal freshman academy as well as fieldhouse. Much more efficient building, and that's not just in travel and circulation for students, but it's also in the operations. Ample access to green space, ideal solar orientation, no windowless classrooms, much shorter construction duration at three years, and obviously, as a concept, being on a new site would not require any modular classrooms, the school would function as it does now, and this would be built and ready to be moved in. I'll offer, that's an overview of the options, but I'll also offer possibly a clarification at the, one of the previous, the previous meeting where I was presenting, there were some questions, a lot of questions about modulators and some about short-term, you know, versus long-term, and I think it's important to point out, when we look at short-term and long-term meeting the educational goal, we're really thinking, short-term being, you know, five years after construction, long-term being something much further out, and then there's the future of education fifty years out that we don't know, but we're trying to build flexibly for. I think that my explanation may have been not clear in that the modular, the duration of construction was not what I was referring to when I say short-term. So when we talk about the construction phasing and if modulators or temporary classrooms are required, we're not meeting the educational program and objectives on day one. We're trying to maintain the current programs that exist in the functionality, and it does come sometimes with compromises that we have yet to explore. Sometimes there are benefits, so when we talk about how to create swing space, it may be a benefit that we no longer use, I think it's ten computer labs that exist as space that teachers sign up for. If we have computer carts and they can be delivered to classrooms, that might work better than those assigned spaces. That creates ten rooms of swing space. So, we're at an early stage, you know, obviously very conceptual, so I just felt it was important to point that out, that during construction, we're maintaining the current educational program. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Okay, now, let me address the Article ninety-seven issue. And Article ninety-seven is a state law that says that if you accept state funds to either construct or improve a public park in your municipality, that when you accept those funds, you accept the restriction that that park is going to forever have the restriction that it shall remain a public park. And what normally happens when you accept this money for park purposes is that there is a deed restriction recorded at the registry of deeds, saying that it shall forever be held open for park use. And therefore, if somebody does a title examination, they will discover during the title examination that there is a restriction on the use of this park. Now, for example, in two thousand and five, the city of Lowell accepted funds from the Commonwealth to install synthetic turf playing field at Colley Stadium. And when they accepted that money for the Colley Stadium synthetic turf, a deed restriction was recorded at the registry of deeds indicating that was, there's a restriction on the Colley Stadium. Now, in nineteen ninety-nine, the city of Lowell accepted state funds to put in visitors' bleachers, a rubberized running track, a field hockey field, a high jump, and relocation of the existing bleachers to the James Martin softball field and the field hockey field. Unfortunately, at that time, no deed restriction was ever recorded at the registry of deeds. So as part of our due diligence, we did, the law department did a title examination of all of the parcels in the Colley area. And as a result of that title examination, and we reviewed it again this morning for accuracy, as a result of that title examination, the only restrictions that were on record in the registry of deeds was the Colley Stadium site, which I just talked about, and a parcel of land over near Alumni Stadium. But we weren't concerned with the restriction at Colley Stadium, because we weren't going to be impacting Colley Stadium, and we weren't concerned about the parcel over at Alumni Stadium, because we weren't going to be impacting that parcel over there. Probably a month ago, Brian Martin came to my office and profited information to us that there was a restriction on a parcel of land that the Lowell High Alumni Association had deeded to us some time ago. And he suggested that we need to look into that restriction. Well, we did look into that restriction, and it's not an Article ninety-seven restriction on that deed. It was just a restriction that it should be left open for park use. But since we own the property, the law department was of the opinion that we could get rid of that restriction easily if we needed to get rid of that restriction. And that was, that was a separate parcel, that wasn't one of the two parcels we're talking about right now. So when we did our title examination as part of our due diligence, we found no restrictions against the land which is known as the Martin softball field or the field hockey field. I did not know of any restrictions on the use of this property, because, one, I wasn't here in nineteen ninety-nine when the city accepted the money, and number two, the first time I became aware of any restrictions on these two parcels of land was last night at approximately 6:00 PM, when I received an email containing a letter from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts indicating to me that there was a restriction against this land that we're now talking about. So I never knew about this until 6:00 PM last night. We immediately did our research this morning, and like I previously said, if you do accept the money, you accept the restrictions that come along with it. So on these two particular parcels, there is an Article ninety-seven issue that would have to be addressed to proceed with, not to proceed with the option if you so choose, but sometime down the road would have to be addressed if it was going to become the final preferred option.
Could you do the timeline of the whole process going forward? Mr. Manager, could you do the timeline of the process going forward of how we go from here, and where we are in the process, and how much time is left?
Right. What we're hoping for is for the city council to vote on four options to recommend to the school building authority of Massachusetts to move forward with a more intense investigation relative to those four options. Remember, we're really still at the early stages. We really need to do a lot of, a lot more research relative to four options. We've got to do geotechnical studies, we've got to do traffic studies, we've got a lot of work to do. But the Mass School Building Authority would like the city council to send to them for review four options. Now, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to expedite the process as much as possible, because the cost of construction go up, so each month that goes by, it's costing us more to construct a high school. So we're trying, we're trying to keep as tight a schedule as possible. So what we're looking to is, we're trying to get on the June twenty-eighth Mass School Building Authority agenda to approve our four options. And in order for us to get on that June twenty-eighth meeting, we're asking the city council to, at the last stage, vote for four preferred options by February twenty-eighth.
Okay. Okay, if there's no questions from the city council at this point, then I'll open it up to the speakers. We'll start with the first speaker. The first speaker of the evening is Amen Hebit.
Good evening, the councils.
When he comes to the mic, as I'm sure you know, Mr. Manager, because you've been here before, just your name and address.
Amen Hebit, four ninety-nine Wilder Street, sorry, sir. I'm gonna give a different perspective of this four options. I'm gonna give a construction, construction review of this. I know these people here are doing an independent thing, and they're doing the studies and all that, but as a construction worker for thirty years, I see a lot of holes in these plans here, and of course, they're just here to give options to the council and to the city. This first one, full renovation, I don't see how this is even plausible, how it even got passed the building committee, because this is basically a Band-Aid that's gonna just keep putting back time. You cannot renovate these, this build, especially this nineteen-twenty-two building. The freshmen, I thought one of the main goals when this was proposed, and I spoke on it two years ago, that we wanted to build a high-tech innovative school for the city to be proud of. This one, this first option is totally absurd. I don't know how, yes, it is the cheapest one to start. Okay, now, when you get into this Lord Building, you get into the freshman academy, that's where the overrun's go. When you start doing demo in there and you find out, there is asbestos in there, gentlemen, you start taking down walls. They may have taken the non-friable stuff out, I mean, the friable stuff out, but they haven't taken out the non-friable, which is concrete, brick mortar, mastic on the floor for the tiles, stuff like that. That's where your overrun is gonna come. Okay, I know I only got five minutes, so we're gonna expedite this. Silica, no one's mentioned silica. You start cutting, you got silica. You've got students in those buildings, in any part of the building, they become part of construction environment, a construction environment. You understand what that is? I'm gonna show you that. That means the city better be on the lookout to buy thirty-five-hundred of these. Okay? These are what I wear to work, when I'm doing renovation, construction. See this mask? I didn't get the chance to clean it the last time I used it. Okay? This is what this mask collects. These filters change every two hours. Okay? And even though with all the containment you can do, the negative air machines, you're gonna put these students into that environment. Here's a small one. This is what you get when you're sweeping floors. Okay? Now, just to move on from that, is you're gonna have in modular schools. I heard at the commission, the building commission, asked about used modular schools. Can't get them. They become obsolete after three or four years. Okay? Because of mold, they're mobile. They get mold in the air conditioning units, stuff like that. Now, like I said, we were on the line to build an innovative school. These, the gentleman that just spoke, basically told you, it's a repair. We've done the repairs on this building, ninety-seven to two thousand. My daughter was in the building, and if I would've known that there was dust in those hallways, there would've been a lot of problems, believe me. I work in this thing. I gotta go every year to have my lungs checked now after thirty years of construction. Okay? Now, we're getting on to, we'll move off of that one. That one, just totally absurd. I don't understand modulators, demo in the school, don't make sense at all. We've already done it. Okay? We're spending three hundred million dollars. We might as well get something that's worth it. We don't want some piece of junk that we're gonna have to ten years from now put more money into. Okay? I know my time's running. Okay, the second one, little better. At least you're moving the freshman academy over, you're eliminating that building. But you still got that nineteen-twenty-two school, and you still gotta do renovations. And as in the earlier one, can't bring it up to par. Cannot bring that school up to par, because you still got the shell to deal with. You don't know what, when you start taking walls down, underpinning that foundation, the footings, the footings that may have to be put in there to build, to put the new structures in. Okay? Lighting, no solar, no solar energy. That's not energy efficient, that's not even, that's not a high-tech school. All right? Three hundred and something million dollars. Okay? I like the fact, moving the freshman academy, Lord Building, really obsolete, but that can be renovated, and there's still a construction environment involved with our children. My kids are going up. I have no, you know, people wanna put their kids into something like that, I'd be looking at other options. Okay? That's not a bad option there, besides the nineteen-twenty-two building. Okay? Option number three, now we're getting into a thing where we're gonna call eminent domain, we're gonna have a fight over that, everybody's gonna be fighting over that.
It's five minutes.
I'm already five minutes?
Yeah, should wrap it up. You spent a lot of time on number one.
Okay. Well, basically, you wanna build something right, build it, no. I mean, these people don't have nothing involved in this. They're gonna get paid any way it is, and I really feel that we should move on with a new innovative school, which I spoke on, and I was the first one to speak on that two years ago, when we voted to appropriate the two million dollars to do the feasibility study for these people here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
John, it's in gear.
Good evening. My name is John Geer. I live at thirty-nine Alcott Street in the Belvedere neighborhood of Lowell. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm a retired state employee, board member of the Lowell Parks and Conservation Trust, and president of the Belvedere Neighborhood Association. The views I'm sharing tonight do not represent all of Belvedere. We saw at last week's Belvedere Neighborhood Association monthly meeting that there's a range of views and opinions on a new high school location from residents within Belvedere throughout the city. I think nearly all of us can agree that we need a new high school, and there has been good work by the city and our legislative delegation to obtain state funding for the new school. Residents appear willing to have their taxes increased to pay for the city's share of the new high school project. The city has hired a good team of architects and project managers that have helped move the project forward. Also, I had the opportunity to participate in the visioning sessions for what the new high school should be for students and the community in the twenty-first century. I was impressed with Brian Martin and his staff, students, community leaders who participated in sessions, and their shared vision for the new high school. The four options that the school building committee has recommended to the city council seem to be the best options available. These are all very positive things that make me proud to have moved to Lowell thirty years ago with my wife and children. I've gone on record that the new high school belongs downtown, and I continue to feel this way based on the information presented to date. The downtown is a central location that is most accessible to the student population and the community's population in general, considering that roughly a third of the current student population walks to the high school. The downtown location is also in proximity to the University of Massachusetts Lowell and Middlesex Community College, providing opportunities for high school students to connect to these institutions of higher learning. A downtown location is also near the city library and the Lowell National Historical Park, and also close to all the downtown amenities, city services like police and fire, the school administration, and city administration. For all these reasons, I support a downtown location for the new high school. I recognize the attraction of a new school at a site outside of downtown, namely the Colley Stadium location. Being able to build a new school on a new site without disruption of students and faculty has its advantages, but getting students, faculty, and others to Colley from all parts of the city would be of the city would be challenging. The infrastructure such as adequate roadways and sidewalks in Belvedere would have to be improved and maintained, and there are significant costs and logistics of busing students to a relatively distant location. In addition, as we discussed tonight, there may be Article 97 issues using the Colley ball fields for the new school. Lastly, I think that moving the high school out of the downtown will create a significant void that not, may not be filled in the near future. I have hoped that you, our elected leaders on the city council, will choose the best option for the new high school. It may be one of the bigger decisions that you have to make for our city, but at least you have the opportunity to make such an important decision. In addition, I caution all of us not to make hasty assumptions on the options before all the information's available. I'm basing my views on information available to date, but more information will be forthcoming as the options are further investigated, so things may change. Lastly, I encourage residents to not think less of your neighbor because he or she has a different viewpoint on the new high school and its location. Diversity is a hallmark and great quality of the city of Lowell, whether in its culture or in its residents' opinions. The good news is that residents are passionate about their children's high school education, a very positive thing for our great city. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you. Lynn Daly. Anthony Filettra.
My name is Anthony Filettra. I live at 38 Carriage Drive here in Lowell in the Belvedere section. I just had a question for the folks from Parkman, Eastman, and Skanska. I attended the meetings last week, Tuesday morning and Tuesday evening, and when the question was posed, what was the best site for the education now and for the future of all of our students in Lowell, the answer was the Colley site. 24 hours later, when we went to the Belvedere Neighborhood Association meeting, Council Mercier asked the same question, the answer was not the same. I would like to know tonight, what is the best site for our students to be educated safely, properly, with the best technology, with the best everything?
Okay. Is it, is that it? Are you finished speaking?
Finished speaking. I'd like an answer though.
Okay. Does somebody want to answer that question?
Yeah, I can, I can start. It's, it's not a very easy question to answer because a number of things. We're so early. We've tried, I know I've tried to be very careful to say that there are distinct advantages to starting from scratch, starting on a new site with a new building, but the educational objectives are more than just, you know, the, the walls that can be constructed, it's, it's very much about its location as well. So it's really, in a lot of, a lot of ways, it's for the city to decide, and it's for the study to bear out and go into much greater detail on each one of these options there. Even with what you might consider the most difficult, the full renovation, we have a lot to explore, even looking at school schedule, as well as examples like computer classrooms, to understand how impactful this will be to, to the education as it exists now, as well as for the future. So I think, I hope I'm answering your question. I know that in many districts, the range of options that you're, that you see up here, even though some may not be preferred or look like they may be fatally flawed, it's sometimes prudent to have ends of the spectrum explored further because great information can come out of that.
As of today, your four options, what is the best option?
It's too early to answer. And, and we're not trying to select one option at this moment.
No, I understand, but on that Tuesday morning and evening, it was Colley Stadium. And now, less than a week, less than 24 hours, it isn't.
I, I don't believe I have identified any option as preferred. I, I really would hesitate to do anything like that at this very, very early stage. And I, I can't speak for the whole team. I know sometimes explanations can be made about aspects that are ideal, and, and maybe it was spoken wrong, or it was interpreted wrong.
Is there anyone else that would like to have anything to say in regards to which site they believe?
I think it's too early to tell.
Okay. Thank you. Kristi Filettra.
My name is Kristi Filettra. I too live at 38 Carriage Drive in the Belvedere section. There's been a lot of talk in numerous meetings that one of the pros of having the high school stay downtown is its proximity to UMass Lowell and Middlesex Community College. And I was able to speak at the Belvedere meeting, but I also would, would like to clarify for the general public. I work at Middlesex Community College. I am the dual enrollment point person for Lowell High School. And I would just like to point out that the students at Lowell High take their classes, their Middlesex Community College classes, at Lowell High. They do not come to Middlesex Community College for those classes. As the representative from Middlesex, I am at Lowell High at least once a month, visiting with students. In fact, today, we sat down to plan in March, a three-day event where we would be going to Lowell High to speak to them about Middlesex, to have them fill out applications, to have them take the college placement test. They do not need to come to campus to do any of that. We also will be there in April, we will be there in May. We are also taking Lowell High students to see our Bedford campus in April. Again, they do not need to come to our campus, we are going to them. So the proximity to having the high school close to Middlesex Community College will not affect the Lowell High students' relationship with Middlesex Community College. And I also did clarify with my point person at Lowell High that the UMass Lowell classes are too taken at Lowell High, not UMass Lowell. So I think it's safe to say that those relationships will continue, they will flourish, they will grow, no matter where the high school is. And I just wanted to make sure that the general public was aware of that. And if they have any questions, they could absolutely talk to me about it at any point. I would be more than happy to speak to you about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Eric Nelson. I reside at 208 Fairmount Street in Belvedere, and I'm a proud alumnus of Lowell High School. Class of 1998, and a proud Lowellian, and still, despite today's headlines, a strong and ardent supporter of the new high school at Colley Stadium. When I often meet people through work in Boston or in suburbs, they inevitably ask, you know, where, where I'm from, and, and I proudly tell them Lowell-born and raised. Their next question, if, if they know me, is usually, where did I go to high school since I went to Harvard? And I proudly tell them, just as proudly tell them, I was actually one of three classmates to go to Harvard in my graduating class, as well as a few to MIT, a Dartmouth, a Boston College, and a Holy Cross. And I love to see the looks on their face when I tell them that, the quality of students that Lowell High produces. Today, we faced the biggest decision before the council in recent memory and for generations to come. And while I'm, I'm, I'm more of the, the trust-but-verify camp, especially when it comes to the case of the magically disappearing modules or the magically appearing Article 97. If you feel like others who have written recently that great deference should be given to the work and opinion of the consultant team, then I'm fine if you agree with Mr. Bell that the Colley site is the ideal educational environment. And by the way, Mr. Bell, in my opinion, that's a fairly objective and straightforward conclusion that you, as one of four accredited learning environmental planners in the state, should not feel you have to back down from. It's not saying that it's perfect, or without other issues that need to be considered and addressed, and, as we all found out today, there, there are some other issues, but that a blank slate is generally better than existing conditions for meeting the educational plan, which was a, a great document done by the folks who, who put that together for, for the city. This should in and of itself not be controversial. This in turn leads me to a proposed framework for making this decision. What is in the best interest of the children? All the children. When I step back and really try to remain objective, I truly believe this is the correct lens from which to view this decision. For example, when you study for the bar exam, and you take a bar review course, and you're covering the family law section, they essentially tell you to state what is in the best interest of the child as often as possible. For us here today, we should take the same approach, and that should be our mantra. What is in the best interest of the children? All the children. Not just the walkers, not just the crew team, who it turns out doesn't practice in the canal, but on the river, and takes a bus to practice. Not just the middle-class children, who may belong to a country club, but do in fact add their own diversity. Not just the football players, but all the athletes, male and female. And not just the dwindling number of students petitioned training in extracurriculars. We should provide all 3,000-plus students today, tomorrow, and for generations to come, the ideal educational environment, while at the same time working diligently to mitigate the real concerns of our friends and neighbors and the potentially impacted neighborhood. For at the end of the day, shouldn't the educational best interest of the children weigh more than increased traffic that we should do our best to mitigate and control? With my time remaining, I'd like to briefly dispel some myths surrounding the Colley site. Myth one, it will take an hour to get from Patacavol to Colley. Fact, for the last six years, I have regularly driven from Belvedere to Patacavol to drop my children off at school. It takes me 15 minutes. Myth two, a new school and increased traffic will decrease home values. Now, this was discussed recently in this chamber, but the fact is, and I don't think I'm going out on a limb here, but I'm pretty sure no one wants their home values to go down. Trust me, my wife and I just took a big hit on the first house we bought in Lowell. Nonetheless, we decided to stay and double down. The more relevant factor on home values is the quality of the public school system. And how do you improve the public school system as measured by attendance, GPA, and graduation rates? You increase involvement in extracurriculars. And how do you do this? Do you move the extracurricular venues downtown? Or do you move the school to where the extracurricular venues are currently located? Myth three, the Colley site will disturb wetlands. Fact, wetlands and associated buffers are factored into the design. As Mr. Bell said earlier, design is only using 20 out of 34 to 36 acres. This is not an issue, it's a red herring. Myth four, Tucksperry and Wonwell Building on the Colley site. Fact, the land in question is owned by the city, and the parking use is an approved use as of right. This is not an issue, this too is a red herring. Myth five, Article 97 applies to the Colley site. I haven't had a chance to dispel that one yet, but give me a couple days, and I think I'll, I think I might have a shot. Well, what I can tell you is that on page 58 of the 2013 open space plan for the city, the land in question is not a permanent restriction on it, it's a limited restriction. So I think the comment that I saw in the paper may be factually wrong. This is obviously kind of a time is of the essence issue. In closing, I beseech, beseech the council to do as right, not only in the best interest of my two children as they approach their high school years, but what is in the best interest of all the high school age children over the proposed, proposed construction duration, and for all the children attending Lowell High School for generations to come. Please do not put our 21st century high school in a 19th century location. And if necessary, let's start the Article 97 process as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Walton Nelson. 10 Whitman Street, tough act to follow. First of all, I want to congratulate the head of school, Brian Martin, and his educational team on a, just a terrific educational plan. Secondly, I want to congratulate Perkins, Eastman, and Skanska. Very informative through all the steps, and very transparent. Thank you. I first got involved in this in December, and it's probably a 60-plus-year odyssey. I've been thinking about this new high school at Colley Stadium. I know how difficult the process had to be to get these proposals, there had to be eight or nine or 10 of them, to try to fit that wonderful educational 21st century plan into that 19th century site. Very, very tight. It reminds me, going back to 1961, when Mayor Downs proposed to put the high school out there, and we heard the same story, the walkers and the downtown and the same stuff over and over. And then Jim McMahon in, in the mid-'60s proposed it in the same stories, the same walkers and downtown businesses and the effects of downtown. And we know, the kids have been here, and it hasn't affected any of those businesses. They all left. Finally, Lowell, during that period, I was very active in visiting schools athletically, and Nashua moved out of the core, Haverhill moved out of the core city, Peabody moved out of its core city, Salem moved out of its core city, Beverly moved out of the core city, Taunton moved out of the core city, Brockton moved out of the core city, Lynn Classical moved out of the core city, Lowell and Lawrence remained. And they did in the '70s what they thought was best with a limited budget, and they added on. We spent $18 million on that 78 renovation. It ballooned up to $22 million, so we eliminated a bridge and a media center. Fast forward, Lawrence at that time added on to Oak Street Cafeteria, doing the same kind of things that we did to try to solve the problem. We dumped another $40 million into the building in the mid-'90s. We lived through the swing corridors. Headmaster Samaras is not here tonight to tell you the difficulty of that, but we lived through it, and we got the job done. But still, today, the building is very inefficient. And I don't know what the construction techniques were in the '70s, but it's, those buildings haven't lasted the test of time. Finally, Lawrence saw the light, and they've moved out of the core city. And in their second year operation, I spent the whole day down there, visiting administrators and facilities managers, talking to kids and faculty, and not one person ever looked back to Haverhill Street or regretted the move. And there was new hope and new educational optimism in Lawrence today because of that move. I thank you, I hope you make the right decision, go forward, don't delay, because Mitt Romney's building authority's not quite as generous as the old SBA. And finally, I noticed that on all those Lowell High proposals downtown, as Mr. Bell said, the parking was the, the parking garage. That's kind of a misnomer. 1,200, 1,200 cars. You'd think that was available at the Lowell High School. The whole first floor is out of line between the fire, police, and leases. The second, third, and fourth floor is shared with UMass Lowell, and now construction work is building the new dorm. The new dorm's gonna be available, I assume, in September, and I know the city's made arrangements for them to park in there also. Finally, the importance of this parking. Friday night, I tried to go to Lowell High School Muthorn basketball game. Couldn't get there. UMass Lowell was playing BU that night, there were 6,500 people at that. The ART garage was full, and it was an event parking situation. Is that fair to our parents and our students? You have to get there early to pay the 10 or 15 bucks to watch your son and daughter play. play. All the available parking was gone. Even the posted towing zones were gone. I'd try to park in one of those. The situation is this: There's three onsite parking spots at that high school. One for the headmaster, and Bill Samaras would tell you how precious that was. One for the director of curriculum, and one for the head custodian. There's three curb cuts on the front for handicap parking. The site itself is not conducive to a 21st-century education. Thank you very much.[639.38][639.38](APPLAUSE).
38 Upham Street. I have two children that are currently in the sixth grade, so they'd both be attending Lowell High during any renovation, new building. And as a parent, deciding where to send your children for four years of high school education is stressful, because if you make a mistake, you don't get a second chance. They can't just say, oh, let's stop those four years over. They're already, the ball's rolling, you're kind of stuck where you are. So, looking at schools, I graduated from Lowell High, I have a high opinion of Lowell High. Their faculty and staff, second to none. I think they do a great job of helping students achieve their potential when they have the tools available for them. What worries me is the type of environment we're willing to expose these kids while they're trying to get an education. Kids tend to disengage if they're not comfortable or unhappy in their location, and once you lose a kid, it's real tough to get them back. And the kids in Lowell, they're great, but we need to keep them engaged with the school, whether it's activities at the school, educational, clubs. We can't afford to lose those kids. With the modulars being off the table now, what concerns me is, we have 3,200 students. What are we doing with them during this construction renovation phase? How are we going to fit them all into a construction site? And are we going to put them in the same building that's under construction? Obviously, space is tight now, so if we lose space during the construction, what are we doing with the 3,200? How are we getting them in there? Do we have a guarantee that the modulars aren't going to come back? So, my question would be, what level of disruption does the council feel it's okay to expose the students to? Where would be the drawing line?
Are you all set?
I am all set.
Okay, thank you.[801.94][801.94](APPLAUSE). Jo Lynn Van Denter.
Hello, my name is Jo Lynn Van Denter. I live at 47 Carey Street. I'm speaking, my husband is not here tonight, so I'm speaking for the both of us. I'm a mother of two boys. I'm looking for a high school for my son, my oldest. I'm proud to say that they were excited to go to Lowell High, my oldest. Unfortunately, I have major concerns. One of them is, as we all have been attended high schools, we want that experience for our children. My fear is with the renovation, the health and safety for my children in the renovation process is scary. I'm not going to pretend I know all the logistics, not a construction worker. I do know that, I watch what my children eat, that they get to sleep, they get their rest, they are in extracurricular activities to be healthy. But knowing that there could be severe renovations around them concerns me. I don't know what's going to be around them. I don't want them breathing in what they shouldn't be, and I don't want to have the after-effects. I have had a friend who had a daughter with cancer at a young age, being around a construction site that was not, you know, not intentional, it wasn't on purpose, but it was just that that's where they lived and that's what they're around. I don't want my children going to school, not just that, but let me say this: They're not going to have the experience knowing that if there are, and we don't know for a fact, you cannot tell me for a fact my child will not be in a module home for, well, not module home, but a modular, you know, through the construction site, and guarantee me that they're going to be safe, and where they're going to be located, and the security of them, and the safety of that concerns me. And they're not going to get the experience that we all, as high school students, once wanted for ourselves and for my children. Maybe I'm not making any sense to some of you, maybe I am. But that's scary for me, to know the safety precautions, what they're breathing in, what's around them, who's going to protect them? They're not in one building anymore. We know that we don't live in the world we lived in 10 years ago, never mind 20 years ago, so how are you going to protect these children? If you keep the school where it is, and then have a site like Colley, they're having that same experience that every child deserves. They're getting top-notch education, they're getting Division I sports, and at the same time, they then can move to a safe school. Not that Lowell High is not safe now, I'm just saying that they're moving into a better location without having all of the renovations take place. On top of that, I will say this: People are concerned about the location, and we are a diverse school. Absolutely. I love the city for that. I believe in that. However, it doesn't matter if you are middle-class, high-class, low-income. My husband coaches football for 7th and 8th graders, and they practice at Colley. And guess what? Some of them, at 12 years old, ride their bikes to Colley, home, at 7:30, 8 o'clock at night, when it's dark out. Is that safe? I don't know. I don't believe it is. Some parents may think so. At least we know if the high school is where it needs to be, in a safe location at Colley, everything will be right there. There won't be any issues. Everything's located where it should be. And isn't that what we want, the best for our children? Again, maybe I'm not making any sense at all, but I know that I want what's best for my children, and I will do what I have to, and I'm not going to put them in Lowell High as much as my child wants that. For the education alone and the Division I sports is amazing for my children, but I'm going to have to look elsewhere. And I know many families, we are very active in the city of Lowell, but unfortunately, I will guarantee you, you will not just lose just a few families, you will lose many. We are the next generation to get ready for these children. We need what's best for them, not what's best for what we think is for us at 40, or 50, or 60 years old, but what's best for these teenagers that are going to want to stay in the city of Lowell and make what's best for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.[1117.73][1117.73](APPLAUSE). Dan Shanahan.
Dan Shanahan, 312 Methuen Street. Most of you don't know me, I've chosen to be passive in politics, but this issue, this project, has lit a fire under my political butt, and I've become a part of a group that shares the same passion for where this project should go. I am in favor of the Colley site. I've tried to remain objective and hear pros and cons on all the options. But our group firmly believes, and there is certainly a group that is growing and growing by the day, that is in support of why it should be at Colley and why it's in the city's best interest. I don't need to pile on all the pros. I think the people that have spoken before me have done a great job of doing that, so I would defer to them. But I did become a part of this group because I do think there are some concerns about the process, and we want to make sure that the council does its due diligence and really does its homework, and listens to all the evidence when it comes to making this decision. For example, again, last week, it was represented to this council that there were going to be as many as 20 to 30 modules. Tonight, we hear that there's a correction, there may be none. Some might say that that's not a correction, that's a substantial change from what was represented last week. I do understand it's very early on in the process, but again, I think reality is, is once we get into construction to accommodate that many students at Lowell High School, I think it's going to be unavoidable. With respect to the Article 97, I think we can all agree that that's just one approval process of many approval processes that's going to be needed for a project of this size, not just for the Colley site, but for any other site. So I'd request that the council go forward with that Article 97 approval, have preliminary discussions with the grant manager. What does the grant agreement say? Does this new Colley option, can it be integrated into that grant agreement? If fields are being taken away, my understanding is fields are going to be rebuilt. So, again, I think that that is something that requires more looking into. I heard Mr. Bell say, option for, which is Colley, is the most viable option, so I would respectfully request that the council keep that option on the table as a viable option moving forward, and to be in consideration for the final vote in the coming months. Thank you for your time, and thank you to all that came tonight. Obviously, this shows how important this is, not only to the Belvedere section of the city, but to the city as a whole. Thank you.[1325.48][1325.48](APPLAUSE).
Kim Scott, 27 Commonwealth Ave., South Lowell. I'd like to start off by thanking the mayor and the city councilors for allowing me to speak tonight. I think you have a very difficult decision ahead of you that's going to affect generations of children. I originally planned on speaking about the pros of Colley and my concerns about the downtown site, and then some events this afternoon changed my direction about what I wanted to speak about. So over the past few weeks, it's been concerning to me that the number of modulars has changed. It feels that as a push has happened for support of the Colley site, the number of modulars keeps going down. It's very alarming. I don't know if that just means that more children will be educated inside a construction zone instead of outside of a construction zone, which I find just as bad. Then today's news came out. So after years of investigating site locations, lots of people taking lots of times out of their lives to participate in the process, were to believe that a random woman from the state happened to send a letter on the day that the decision would be made on the final location for state review. I'm skeptical personally. How did all the architects, city attorneys, parks employees not know that a vote had been taken to commit Colley fields for recreation use forever? How much tax money's already been spent studying the Colley site? I believe that the Colley site should move forward for study and research, the fields can be replicated onsite, and that we should move forward with Article 97, whatever we have to do reversal or approval. I also feel that after all the hard work and massive support for the Colley site that we've been seeing, that it wouldn't be appropriate to vote not to move the option forward for study. I believe this is owed to your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you.[1448.23][1448.23](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name's TJ McCarron, and I live at 831 Westwood Street. Father of four young children, who won't be impacted by either project while in process, but it doesn't matter. This is an easy decision in my mind. We've made a lot of strides in this city due to a lot of the leadership in this room, but I still feel that we're on the cusp. Keeping that in mind, why would we gamble the future of this city unnecessarily by choosing an inferior site? Makes no sense to me. One site has a real potential for dramatic cost overruns, major disruptions to students. You eliminate the opportunity to add to the commercial tax base by staying where it is. Why would we do that? If you look at the two options, you look at the two parcels, it makes no sense to stay where it is. Let's create the campus environment, take advantage of the resources available, and do the right thing. I urge the members of the city council to vote for Colley, and I urge them to address the Article 97. Thank you.
Thank you.[1540.23][1540.23](APPLAUSE).
Good evening. My name is Leo Kriegen. I live at 21 O'Hare Way. Lifelong resident of Lowell, Mass., and a graduate of Lowell High School in 1990. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I just wanted to kind of give my opinion and kind of the process I went through in determining what I thought was the best option for all of our students. Went into it with an open mind, and probably initially was leaning towards downtown, to be honest with you, just because it's kind of where it's always been. But after looking at all the sites and listening to the good folks that did all this work here, I can't understand how anyone would look at any site other than Colley Stadium. It's the only one that meets all the educational objectives. That Mr. Martin did a great job. In addition to doing a great job at this, I think he's really done an amazing job at the high school over the last, you know, period of time which he's run the high school. In my mind, he's instilled a sense of pride back in the high school, not only in the parents and the community, but in the teachers that are there every day helping our kids, and he should be commended for that. So I just wanted to say that as well. But I have to say, I do disagree with him, and I think that the one major issue of ensuring that every kid in this city gets access to the site, that no one can deny is the best site because it provides all these educational objectives, we need to focus our energy on helping those kids get to that site, and not spend time spinning our wheels and arguing about nonsense like kids in our neighborhood and cars in our street for 180 days out of the year. I've had a few similar experiences to Eric in kind of going out and living in other places and talking about people, where I'm from and where I went to school and what I do for a living. And, you know, I'm sure a lot of people get it, you get the same reaction. You're from Lowell? You went to Lowell High School? And I'm really proud that I went to Lowell High School, and it's part of the reason I moved back to this city, to send my kids to Lowell High School. And, I mean, I think I share the same sentiment. There's no way I'm sending them to a construction site for, at the best-case scenario, four and a half years. And, you know, talking to, I mean, this gentleman probably knows more than anyone else here, but I don't think renovations typically stay on budget and on time. I mean, maybe this would be the one in a million, but I just don't think it'll happen. So I guess, kind of in closing, I would just kind of implore the folks in this room, please, you know, when you get the phone calls about the noise, just talk to them about what's the best decision for the kids, and not just the kids in Belvedere, or the Walkers, or Bridge Street, or Centerville, but every kid in the city of Lowell. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.[1747.48][1747.48](APPLAUSE).
John Maria, 190 Mansa Street, Lowell, Mass. I'd like to speak on behalf of the Colley Stadium location for a new high school. As a resident of Belvedere, a business owner, and an owner of commercial property within the city of Lowell, I've been following this issue from the beginning. This is an issue of great importance to the future of Lowell in so many ways, not only in regards to the physical location of the high school. The financial implications will affect every owner of residential and commercial property for years to come. Perhaps that is why so many residents have their own point of view on... Perhaps that is why so many residents have their own point of view on this project. In recent years, there has been many new high school projects within the Commonwealth. With each new high school comes new skyrocketing costs, $500 a square foot in construction. It just blows my mind, along with the renovation costs. A time will come when cities need to look at construction costs and how private construction projects are built with much more affordable budgets while maintaining the same quality product. With all that aside, if the final choice is one of the four proposals that are looking to be forwarded to the MSBA, then hands down, the Colley site has to be the choice. I understand you will not have the walking accessibility for students from the acre, Lower Highlands, and Centerville. However, that should not be the deciding factor. If built correctly, with limited and even no access from Clark Road, Colley can still be a very accessible for vehicular traffic from Douglas Road and Rogers Street. The flexibility and efficiencies that can be achieved with new construction is something that can never be feasible in any scenario of the present location. As a former student of, I believe, the first or second year in the Lord Building, I'm a little donefounded at how the school was built with only a 30-year lifespan. That is why it is so important we do not make that mistake again. It is time to cut our ties with the Carbon Building and downtown location. We cannot pour more money into a building that is over 100 years old. Our students deserve better. If you look at Lawrence several years ago, they faced the same exact choice. They chose to move to the furthest edge of the city and take literally a crumbling stadium, renovated, and built a state-of-the-art school on the same site. I believe this has worked out well for them. Having the stadium as part of the high school makes so much sense in regards to the athletic department. In closing, I also believe that while considering the high school expense, you need to look at an even bigger picture. From what I've read, our next project that has been discussed for future consideration is a new public safety complex. By relocating the high school to Colley site, you leave many doors open for future options. Some of the benefits I believe the Colley location provides are, one, we will not have any inconveniences of all residents of Lowell by having modular classrooms on the streets. We will not have enormous expense of modular classrooms adding to the construction budget. We will not degrade the learning experience of students with demolition and construction right outside their classrooms. We will not be involved in long, drawn-out, expensive litigation and eminent domain proceedings, which nobody here can tell you in accurate time or cost that that would result in. Your potential to have the present Lord building the site, to build a future public safety complex without disrupting the one during construction when using current assets the city already owns, who knows? Maybe keeping part of that building would be feasible for that project. I believe the police station belongs downtown, accessible to all residents, not on Tanner Street. I know the last couple topics are a little off-topic, but it deserves to be part of the discussion, part of the big picture. Please keep the taxpayers as well as the students in mind with all your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, City Council, Mayor Kennedy, City Manager, and Associates.
Dennis, your address?
676 Beacon Street. I'm one of three generations to graduate from Lowell High School totaling over 90 years, and I've also taught at Lowell High School for over 35 years. And as many speakers have pointed out, the key question is, what is in the best educational interest of future generations of Lowell High students? I've taught when the 1981 building was built and was terribly distracting to teachers and students to teach during that time. Another question is, what is the ideal educational location? Based on the information I've heard, weighing facts back and forth, the more facts obviously going to come forth, I really feel the best location is out at Colley Stadium. I realize the concerns of traffic. I remember, I've thought about that problem, but, you know, perhaps there could be solutions to the problem such as staggered starting times, which hopefully would alleviate some of that traffic problem. I remember in the early '70s when I taught at Lowell High School, we did have split shifts at that time. So it has been done in the past before. And another issue of consideration that I'd like to get an answer to, again, the land between Market Basket and the athletic fields owned by Mr. Dumulus, I believe in the past they have heard he did offer that land, some of that land to Lowell High School. Perhaps continue to pursue that, that might alleviate some of the problems of several fields being affected, and also maybe talk about leasing some of the parking area from Holy Ghost Park. So again, I thank everybody for their attention. People have worked really hard about this, and I appreciate it. And it's just really nice to see how much pride everybody has in the city of Lowell and Lowell High School. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jennifer Ty.
My name is Jennifer Ty. I live at 17 Hoyd Ave. I am a mother of four. I have four children who will be directly impacted by any of this decision regardless of where it ends up. I am in support of the Colley Stadium location for a number of reasons. I've been to many presentations given by Skanska and Perkins Deesman, and there are certain quotes that I'd like to pull out that resonate to me. One being, building a 21st century learning building, having that for our children, a building that meets all our educational goals and objectives, the most viable place to have our children educated. As a mom, those things resonate big with me. As well as listening to things with modulars and subpar learning for lack of light in classrooms, another thing to me that raises a red flag of downtown. I graduated from Lowell High. My husband graduated from Lowell High, as did all our siblings. There's 10 of us total. I love Lowell High. My oldest is there right now. He could be a walking commercial for the high school. I credit that to the teachers, Brian Martin. I just hope now that we move forward and are able to do its best for our city, our high school. It's not only about the children going there in these next five years, but 21st century. We don't want to be here again in 10, 20 years because we didn't do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and it's Noel Kriegen from 21 O'Hare Way.
I'm sorry.
My whole life. It's okay. It's better than Nicole, which usually happens. So I come as a relative newcomer to the city of Lowell. I was not born here. I was not raised here. I've lived here for about 10 years. I grew up in Melrose, small little village about 20 miles from here, comparatively speaking. I was a reluctant resident at first. My husband grew up here, and I thought, oh, Lowell is such a big city. I don't know what to think about it. I will tell you now, I carry the term "I'm from Lowell," and I say it with exceptional pride because of the sense of community that is here. I think it's really unique, and if you haven't had an opportunity to live in another location, another city, another town, you probably don't have that perspective. I speak from the perspective now, tonight, as a mother. I have three children who are really going to be impacted by this, two of them directly by renovation, that they would be in the high school during that renovation, a third one that would hopefully have the opportunity to attend a new high school wherever that location is. I am in 100% support of the Colley location. Again, from the perspective of educational disruption, the safety and health of my children and all the children in the city of Lowell who would have to attend high school through that. I also think it goes really, I need to bring up the importance of education and the education that Lowell High School uniquely provides. Again, I didn't go to Lowell High School. My husband did. His family is very involved. Many of my closest friends went there and also now, or teachers there are involved in the education there. I've had an opportunity to attend the awards night that happens every year at the end of the school year where they award seniors, outgoing seniors with the different scholarships, and I have been blown away every time at the level of competence and the awards and recognition of these students and that this high school is putting out. I cannot, cannot, in any good judgment, send my child to that school, understanding if any of that were going to be compromised. And I think a renovation at the current location downtown really does not provide an opportunity for my children to excel or any of the children during the time of that renovation. The Colley location is the best option for the quality of education. It meets every educational objective, and it also provides a community sense, a campus feel that I think would pay exceptional dividends for all the extracurricular activities, clubs, sports, again, the heart and hub component that has been discussed and a key component. So again, just let me make sure I got it all. Colley, most viable. Oh, and I would just say, I know modulars have been a huge discussion at the many meetings that I've been at, an area for concern, and I think everyone can agree, even at this high conceptual level that we keep talking about, the only option that doesn't have modulars even at this high conceptual level, and probably when we get down to the granular level, is the Colley site. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank our city officials for doing a very good job in attempting to find the right place for our next high school, which will be the proud and enjoyment of our city for the next 100 years. That's why we have this discussion. Firstly, obvious, we're now narrowing down to three possibilities of renovating the current high school, and one possibility of construction, the new building at Colley. So far, we divide ourselves into two groups. One group is for Colley and another group is against Colley. And downtown is just something that we're stuck with if we don't go to Colley. The group that opposes to Colley said these three things. One, they don't want to add any more traffics to their neighborhood. Two, they don't want students walking in the neighborhood. And three, like our headmaster has said, it's not centralized, and therefore creating difficulties to those students who don't have the luxury of parents dropping them On the group that is for Colley, on the other hand, said these things. Renovating the existing high school endangers their children to dust like asbestos. Modular classrooms are bad, and they want to take their children out of Lowell High School. Two, Colley is near the highway and 495, and therefore convenient to get in and out. And number three, it is cheaper and easier to build a brand-new building. It comes down to about me, my neighborhood, and my kids, but all of that, all of those decisions that we make will have an effect on everybody in the city, thus we have to choose what is best for the city. Both groups have stated their concerns, and they are all legitimate and honest concerns. Those are the concerns that will stay with us when the new high school is founded at either location, and they will stay with us for another 100 years. People will always look back to this day and judge how we had made our decision. Besides restrictions, there is another variable to Colley site, and that is wetland issues. If Colley is a no-go because of the wetland conservation and other restrictions, the only choices we have is current locations, downtown, downtown A, downtown B, and downtown C. Kind of boring, I think. If the horse is not dead yet, I would like to revive it and put it back on the discussion table and add this new location as a third option. It may be the best option after all. I'm not sure, I'm not sure how many more years until we start talking about fixing the Rogers School. Yes, I'm talking about the South Common. South Common will meet all of the concerns about that associated with Colley and downtown. Number one, it is centrally located and very close proximity to the current high school. So if the current high schools survive the last 100 years, I think South Common can survive another 100 years also. Number two, it will be a brand-new building located near Lowell Connector and the highway. Number three, all buses are already going to the train station across the street, and that makes transportation to the high school very accommodating. Let me present two possibilities on how South Common may be possible. Researching on the wetland issues at Colley site will take several months before we could get an answer. If it is buildable, while waiting for that answer, we could like to have state reps or some other people who has connection to the state of Massachusetts for a swimming pool used for Lowell, ask them for a use for Lowell Public Education. I understand that South Common was taken out of the consideration many, many months ago because of the swimming pool. It's a state-owned property, and we need that land if we don't tear down the Rogers School. And the second possibility involves two stages with the construction of the Rogers School that goes with something like this. First, a brand-new building is constructed behind the Rogers School. When it is done, move the freshman academy to the new building and move the Rogers School to the freshman academy. Next step is to tear down the Rogers School and continue to build the high school on the Rogers site and fuse the building together. Yeah, the Rogers School will be moved to the freshman academy. I would like to emphasize that traffic along Torn Lake Street may be not so much different because it is, because of its proximity to the current high school.
Dominic, you have five minutes. Can you try to wrap?
Okay. Can I close up? Okay, thank you. We may want to make South Street accessible as well. I personally think any location has a positive aspect, and I will be happy either way, but I see that South Common is a better choice. We solve all the above concerns, and we don't have to be stuck in one place, in just one place. With that, I would like to ask our panel to put South Common to be the third location for discussion. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. That concludes the list of people who registered to speak, and so we'll open up to the council and start with Council Mercy, then to Councilor Elliott. Council Mercy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I don't think tonight is a night that we're going to be saying, "I support this or that or whatever." But first off, I want to just say that I think people are under the misconception that this is the only available night that they can come and speak, and that is not true because a couple of weeks ago, I made a motion to ask that if this does not get on a home rule petition or agenda or voting or whatever, that we set aside a special day for the public to come up, such as they did this evening, and voice their concerns one way or another. Let us know. And this council supported that unanimously. That hasn't happened yet. This is not that meeting. This is a particular different meeting. Having said that, and I know that, Mr. Mayor, you will figure out a date so that more people can come up. There's probably people watching tonight that probably would have liked to come down here, but they couldn't. There will be a time, and not on a city council meeting. It'll be probably 6 o'clock at night so people can have a chance to eat after they come home from work. I just want to take this opportunity to... I just want to take this opportunity to speak out loud. I'm not addressing anybody. I'm talking to myself out loud. And I just am amazed to know that, for one thing, modular classrooms have disappeared. I don't know how we were under the impression that we need them and now we don't seem to need them. That, to me, is amazing. I don't know if this is your first rodeo, but I just don't know why this is happening. Two, also, on a particular Tuesday, that I believe I heard correctly that the most viable site and in the best interest for education was actually Colley Stadium. And now that, I've never, we've here, we never heard that said, but I know that I heard it said and I know that I'm old, but I don't think that I'm there yet to be seen now. I really don't think I reached that point yet. Next, when we talk about things, we also hear that we don't want to go into that neighborhood. That is a neighborhood. Belvidere is a neighborhood. Yes, it is a neighborhood. The downtown is a neighborhood, too. The downtown is a neighborhood. I don't know why people don't think it is unless the people that'll live in downtown are living on an island, because I think they're living in a neighborhood. I want to say publicly that I will not vote to take down any building by eminent domain in the downtown. I will not want to do that. But I'm only one person, so I hope that I can prevail. But so, I also want to say, on the other hand, I will not support Colley Stadium if the roads leading there impact Douglas Road or Clark Road. That is not fair to those people that live there. So I, off the bat, and I heard that it was changed, that that wasn't an option, that they were going to go in, that was changed to Route 38 and going down Village Street. Now I understand, it's, I hear at the neighborhood meeting, Belvidere neighborhood meeting, no, no, that wasn't taken off. It either is or it isn't. I don't know how things can be changing like this. I also personally can't understand how, if people, design planners, they've dealt with these issues before, why did they not say, gee, you're going to go into land? Did you put in a deed restriction on this property? Why do you, does, professionals not know that? I don't know how they don't know that. Second of, anyway, I want to say, I'm concerned really, if it's downtown, how many change orders and overrides will be possible? We didn't hear that. X number of dollars, but yet there could be change orders, overrides that multiply that and we don't even know about that yet. And I'm not saying that, I'm saying I'm supporting this, that, or the other. I am leaning. Now, I want to say, I don't want to ever, ever hear these words that I have heard, not once, but a few times. I don't want these kids going through my neighborhood. I don't ever want to hear that. Let me tell you who these kids are. These are the kids that went through the Highlands neighborhood to the Daly and Bailey School. These are the same kids that went through the Sennerville neighborhood to go to the Robinson and McCallum School. These are the very kids downtown in the Acre that went to the Hellenica, probably St. Patrick's School. This is a complete violation of the children that are, students that are somebody's children. And I resent that fact right there. I don't ever want to hear that. And honestly, I'm not saying this for applause because I really, I'm not looking for it. I'm just trying to think out loud and tell you what I feel. And we heard speakers talk and I, at some point, and I could do that now, I want to make a motion that we start the process as soon as possible to look into Article 97, to do whatever we can to leave it as one of the four options. That's my motion.
You're making that as a motion right now?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So as part of that motion, would you want the city council to meet with the state delegation to go over what's involved with Article 97?
Yes, I want the process to begin. I don't know how we found out about it in the 11th hour. I really don't know. And I'm surprised that the people that are professionals that deal with building schools, this isn't their first school. And yet, they never were aware to ask these questions, especially when we got to Colley Stadium and we looked at the fields and things. And we're going to encroach on that property and never knew about a deed restriction, a designer, a planner? I don't get it. I'm sorry, that's me.
So, Council Mercy, so your motion that you're proposing is to have the city council meet with the state delegation in order to go over what's involved in reversing the Article 97 covenants?
Yes, yes, I want someone to know with the state rep, what's the next process that we can expedite this? Because I don't want to have to eliminate another option that a lot of people are concerned about.
Okay. Do we have a second to the motion?
Yeah, I'm going to second the motion. I want to speak on it.
Okay. Second, but Council Elliot, you all said?
I don't know if this is true or what, but I thought it needed a two-thirds vote of the council. I thought it needed a two-third vote from the state senate and the House of Representatives.
I think?
And I think it needs 100% vote of the Conservation Commission, of which we just heard a Conservation Commission member stating that he's not for Colley. So is that the answer to demise of this?
Well, I think probably what would be better is to, and this is in the spirit of your motion, is to set up that meeting with the delegation and go over what the process would be, how long that process would do, whether or not that process would affect the high school process, and just take it from there. And I think it's not just the Conservation Commission, it's also the Board of Parks that would have to vote unanimously as well.
I'm not worried about the Board of Parks. I'm worried about the Conservation Commission. When I hear a guy come up here that's not supporting it. And I don't understand how a school committee person can have a husband on the building commission. I thought that was a blatant conflict of interest. I mean, I don't know. That's just me and I'm just talking out loud. So this is all I'm doing.
Council Elliot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first of all, Mr. Manager, we received this letter last night, or you received it. We didn't receive it till today. There are three people CC'd on this letter. There's the Park Superintendent, Mr. Patel, Diane Chadin, Planning Development, and Senator Donahue. Did we contact, anybody from the city contact? The, her name is Melissa Cryan in the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs? Because typically, you're going to CC somebody who made the inquiry. And I want to say that the Secretary's office did confirm that an inquiry has been made on this Article 97. But did Diane or Mr. Patel make an inquiry that you know of?
Prior to this letter being drafted or after this letter?
No, I mean before.
No, nobody from the city did.
So first of all, we're only halfway through this process and it's far too early to take any options out. I have to say, I was disappointed to see this letter out of the blue late afternoon on the eve before we take this vote, especially knowing that restrictions had never been filed in the registry of deeds. But that being said, you know, maybe I've been around long enough to know that this is, it just doesn't seem like a coincidence to me, but, you know, we're going to take one of several votes tonight and more in the upcoming months. This is the biggest issue that is going to transform the face of education in this city, the direction of the city, and the opportunity for every child and every family for future generations. Look, I understand the most compelling issue so far today is the kids who now walk to school. Look, we can move thousands of people in and out of this city regularly for festivals. We can find a way to bus a few hundred kids to that high school and remove that obstacle. I just firmly believe that. So I've already, also, I've already heard that, you know, it could take two years, it could take two years to move a bill like this through the legislature. We've seen it before. And if the legislature can pass a bill to increase their raise in a week, they can get this bill through the legislature in two days. So my motion was going to be a little bit more specific to you, Mr. Manager, through you, Mr. Manager, to the manager, that, first of all, I'm going to support to keep four options in here, but my motion, and if there's no objection to the maker of the motion, that we direct the city manager to have the law department prepare the appropriate documents to immediately file a home rule petition to the legislature to remove Article 97 restrictions on the parcels affected and, at the same time, initiate proceedings to gain approval from the Conservation and the Board of Parks. If there's a meeting at the same time, but I think that we can initiate that whole, the documents to file that, to bring it back to this city council, to vote and to send it down there and get this process moving immediately. This is far too important for this little obstacle, this monkey wrench that seems to be thrown at the last hour to take this option off the table. The kids deserve more. Keep the Colley dream alive and let's move on this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion on the motion? Council Malinaza?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'm not prepared to eliminate any option this evening and I think that getting some answers on Article 97 is appropriate to do. It's unfortunate that we got this today, but it's also not as quickly as, you know, filing a home petition. We have to instruct, I think, the administration to, number one, where do we replicate these fields? Can we replicate these fields at Colley Stadium, which might be a possibility? I don't know the answer to that. But at the same time, I think this evening, as a council of the whole, we were prepared to either say we were going to recommend to the full council on February 28th to keep the four options in the mix. Again, I'm prepared to support that, but at the same time, go down a parallel path and find out how quickly this Article 97 can be dealt with. I too did some investigation today and I was told that, once the, and again, I was told this, I don't know if it's true, Mr. Manager, but once MSBA gets wind of this issue, they're going to take our entire application and set it aside until this gets resolved. If that's the case, that's a problem. And again, I don't know if it's true, but I think we need to have answers. I think we need to get people who came out tonight in support of either option, answers to these questions. And again, we've talked about it being early on in the process. We do need traffic studies. We do need environmental studies. We do need wetland studies. And I think that all four, which were recommended by the school building committee, and I have got to respect the time and effort that they put into it. So again, it's my understanding that tonight's meeting was to recommend to the full council on the 28th that these four be forwarded to the MSBA, which I'm prepared to support. But at the same time, we need to get, as both Council Mercy and Council Elliot said, some answers to the issue of Article 97.
Right.
Thank you.
That's correct. And so just let me remind everybody that this is a committee of the whole, that, and we also don't have a full complement tonight. So if we make a vote tonight on anything, that vote would have to be ratified by the city council at the next meeting, which would be a week from Tuesday, at which time we'll hopefully be at a full complement. So just to remind that. It's my understanding as well that it's more than a home rule petition that's required, that it's quite a procedure to undo that. And, you know, it might seem complicated and unfair and I realize it came up at the 11th hour, but that was the agreement that the city entered into when it took the money to build that softball field and those other fields. But I do think the motion is a good one and that we should at least explore that process and see what's involved to turn that around. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Council Bro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too am ready to support both the four locations and also Council Mercy's and Council Elliot's Article 97 motion as well. Making some phone calls today after we did receive the letter this morning. You know, I know there's three instances, you know, there's one out in Chemsford, that very similar instance, and a show with Tech, there was another instance as well where state-funded land was actually switched from a grant to a gift to that community in order to get this done, to skip Article 97 procedure of going through the House and the Senate. If that could be looked at, Mr. Manager, as well, to see if that could be the case. You know, I do share sentiments of some of my colleagues that this was no coincidence that we got this, you got this, Mr. Manager, late yesterday, the day before the biggest vote we've taken so far. So the process, I think that, you know, it's not a sort of death knell to the project. But again, at the same time, I think that something needs to be done to make sure that all four options that are in front of us today remain. Thank you.
Council Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For starters, I do want to thank the numerous amount of speakers that came down here tonight and gave some outstanding points of view. I want to thank them kindly. They were really very much of an education, as much as Skansker has provided to this point. So I appreciate them coming down and enlightening this council because we are always open for additional information right up until it comes time to make a decision on this, what was going to be a historic vote by the city council. But I do most certainly support Council Elliot's motion.
Council Mercy's? Council Mercy's? Council Mercy's? I'm sorry. I fully intend that. It's this council's due diligence to look at all options as we can. And four options at the same location is not, in my opinion, not doing our due diligence. So I think it's a great motion, one I'm going to support. It's one that involves our kids and their education into the 21st century. So we need to look at any and all options that we have on the table and Colley Stadium is most certainly a viable option as we go forward. But I do have a question, Mr. Mayor, through you, to the Skansker official in the corner. Can I get some clarification, please, on option three? There was some confusion, just for the folks at home and in the audience, that option three, which is an option at the current location, which involves eminent domain, which Council Mercy alluded to, I am very, very weary. I mean, nobody has made a decision to this point, but eminent domain is something I most certainly would like to avoid, for the record. Again, all options are on the table at this point. But what's more important is the amount of modulators, sir. Now, we've been given sort of mixed signals here. How does a complete renovation at the existing site involve no modulators? Or am I the one confused?
So you are correct that we are saying that conceptually no modulators are required. And the way that happens on this option is that a new field house is built on the expanded site, not disrupting any of the education. Once that's complete, a temporary connection is made to the existing building. Students are able to use the new field house before the existing is demolished. Once that's demolished, we have room on the site to build new construction, which would include five-story, 60-classroom freshman academy and technology wing. So that gives us 60 classrooms of swing space to move through the rest of the building. And there are other things at hand that are possible in all these options as far as creating capacity, even within the existing building.
So you're telling me that a field house in turn becomes classrooms during this renovation?
No, the field house just allows us to move students into their PE and athletic programs into new space so that the old one can be demolished without compromising their function. And then that creates the space to build classrooms.
Okay, all right. I mean, you're the expert, but it does seem tight to me. But I guess I will trust your opinion on that. Thank you. But, you know, as we move forward, there are a lot of facts and information that will be forthcoming. I mean, I have concerns all over the place. There's no doubt. While the Colley site is very viable for a campus-style type environment, and this council, to make on another note, has really explored all options. Just today, myself, the mayor, and a few councilors went out to Winchester High School to see that project that's currently ongoing. The week prior to that, we went out to Lawrence High School, which was a project that has so, so many similarities to the Colley Stadium location. The campus-style environment, the proximity to the highway is almost equal. So we are going to continue to explore other cities and towns that have gone through this to give us the best information we have to make an educated decision on this matter. But in my closing, what's sort of not mentioned tonight and is, I hear a lot in the street and I know tonight in majority, many are in favor of the Colley Stadium and they're concerned. Stadium, and their cons, their concerns are gonna be taken into the highest consideration by me. And I also know there's gonna be people on the other side, and their considerations will be taken very highly as well. But as we move forward and gather information, I know the current location has sort of an attachment with a lot of folks, of the historic nature of it, and nostalgia, which we all love and cherish, Lowell High, because it's been there. It's the first coed high school in the nation. Yes, and that is historic, and we're all very proud of that. However, it's also transferable. That is part of the Lowell High legacy, not the bricks and mortar. Okay? That is transferable to any location, if it stays or it's, or if it's moved. Okay? So as we move forward, is, and the same goes for the Clark. The Clark, Headmaster Martin led a very spirited fundraising campaign to restore that to the tune of $50,000, $60,000. That is also transferable, in my opinion, to either keep it there or another location. So as much as we admire history and nostalgia, it's all transferable as we move forward. As an elected official, it's my job to think of the next 50 to 100 years, not the previous 100. Okay? It's one thing to learn from history in the past, but it's another to live in it. So as we move forward, we're gonna continue to gather all the information and facts and make visits that we can. This council most certainly will do its due diligence and do what's, in my opinion, it's simply about the kids and their education in the future, period. That's where it starts, and that's pretty much where it stops. Other things are considered, but that's the highest priority to me. So thank you again to all the speakers. It's going to be a very spirited debate as we go forward, but I am just proud and honored to be part here and part of this process. And I assure to the taxpayers, you will get my highest level of service and due diligence on this project. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'm gonna support Council Mercy's motion as well, but a question through you to the manager. I read the letter quickly, so I apologize. There was three particular, literally legislative actions that had to be taken, and I didn't remember the Conservation Commission being one of them. Can you just enlighten me on what the actual procedures are as they are forth? I mean, one of the procedures, I thought that, once those three pass, assuming they pass, then that department, Energy and Environmental, or whatever department, they would come down and look at the fields that should be replicating, making sure that they were correct, they're authentic to what the grant actually had in place.
Thank you. The, the steps are following is, one, we need to obtain a unanimous vote of the Conservation Commission. We need to obtain a unanimous vote of the Parks Commission. We need to obtain a two-thirds vote of the city council. We need to obtain a two-thirds vote of the legislative, the legislature. And then we have to comply with all of the requirements of the park grant, which will be easier for us to do, because it isn't like they, they improved the land, it was, a lot of it was bleachers and, and those things. So it's not like we have to replicate the entire square footage of the land, because they didn't really just, they didn't improve the land, it was like bleachers and other things. So it'll be easier to, to comply with the requirements of the, you know, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs.
Okay. And the estimated timeframe to go through that process?
I can't give you an estimate, I can't predict today as I sit here.
I think that's one of the, the motion really will reach out to the delegation. I think, it, one, it's fortuitous that whoever alerted the state to this issue reminded them that they did it now as opposed to like in May, because it'd be all over at that point in time. Or we would be pushing this forward and incurring substantial increases in costs, if not losing the project altogether. I guess the thing is, we really need to move on it so we can make that an authentic option that we're gonna be voting on next, well, two Tuesdays from now. That's imperative. Whether you agree with Option Colley or not, I think it's imperative that we make that. I'm a little concerned it's 100%. I think that's something that, again, I'm not gonna comment in some of the comments tonight, but there was a comment that an individual was on the Conservation Commission, I don't know if that's true or not, that's not in favor of that site. So it's kind of like challenging that you need 100%. So I think we need to really take a deep, you know, dive into that deeply to ensure that that's actually the case. Council Rourke articulated some other options that were done in Chelmsford, and I think the Shobah, and I'm not gonna steal his words, but essentially, they were different options that were out there. So if we can aggressively look at that, so we can have this option on the table, that'd be, that'd be good. I think what I'd like to do too, and I apologize for asking this question, because I know folks have been here a long time, but I'd like to go to Perkins Eastman and just kinda, when you're walking through the Option 2 or 3 downtown, you're talking about taking buildings down and, and moving issues around. But what are we doing with, what timeframes are we doing the Lord and the 22 Building? I mean, that's something you're gonna be, I guess the first question, my, my guess is from reviewing everything, is you're gonna strip it right down to the skeletal system, basically. My vernacular, it's not construction vernacular. And you're gonna really rebuild. Are those going on at the same time that you're looking at moving new buildings, taking down the, the, the fieldhouse, et cetera?
I'll, I'll answer part of that, and I'll also defer to the owner's project manager for, for some of the detail. It still is approximated, and what we're looking at is a 60-plus classroom amount of swing space. So that's the amount that we would move through. As we look into more detail, it also has to coincide with, you know, a 60-room lot, where you're taking all floors vertically, so you're not drilling on a floor above where education is happening. We want to make sure we, we cover stairwell to stairwell, so that contractors have their own way in and up and down, and students have their separate way around the building, all staying completely code compliant, and that portions can be completely sealed off, and ideally with buffer space. So, you know, we're not at that level, we're at more of a gross level, where we're looking at the 60 rooms. I'm not sure if we've got the exact sort of timeframe worked out for each one of those buildings, but I'll, I'll defer to Skanska.
No, in fairness, I guess we are preliminary, but this could change then. So not having modulators could become modulators, may not. You don't know really what's behind many of the walls. It just, quite frankly, it's too early to tell, correct?
Yeah, and I can say, you know, we've, we were also reconciling between, you know, architect and OPM, and there are different ideas that are broached, you know, weekly about how we can accomplish this. So we're certainly gonna do better to make sure that, you know, what we state is, is just appropriate for that level. It's easy to get ahead and, and try to look at options, but there are a number of things at our disposal that have been discussed that we haven't explored completely yet, and that includes the utilization of rooms, if, if there is an adjustment to the schedule. So many things at hand that are gonna factor in it and hopefully improve. We try to start off conservative and make it better as we go through.
Okay, no, I appreciate that, I'm sorry.
I think from our OPM, he can talk about phasing and how that's gonna affect it.
Sure, thank you.
And through the mayor, my name's Dale Caldwell, I'm with Skanska, your OPM. And as Mr. Bell says, it's, we're still looking at this from a 30,000 level, looking at a phase occupied renovation. So what we would do is, you go through the building, we would have like a Phase 1, you know, construction, move the kids over, Phase 2, Phase 3. And at this point, we're taking our best guess on how that would actually pan out. So that's the reason why, you know, we would approach it this way.
No, I appreciate that. So I think, taking a look at the Colley location in terms of the duration timeframe, it's probably, three years is a pretty good estimate, because you've been involved in other projects that actually nail down that timeframe. We're giving, all things being equal, and there's, you know, construction company doesn't go out of business, or something bizarre like that, that's probably the easiest to estimate at this point. Is that a correct statement or incorrect?
I, I think that's a fair statement. There are less unknowns, less complications.
Unless something crazy happens, like someone goes out of business, or... So right now, you're at a 30-foot, 30,000-foot level, looking at all the downtown options, you really, really don't 100% know at this point, but you're drilling and you're getting better at those options as you go forward? That's safe to?
Yes.
Okay. No, I appreciate, I think it's a challenge, I mean, obviously, all these, all options have inherent challenges. I think the first option, the renovation, it just isn't, you know, that's just, why would you pay that amount of money and do that? I mean, that's just, why would you? I mean, it's, obviously, we have to do it, because it's required. Just looking at it doesn't make any sense. Obviously, the other three options have their own challenges, but I appreciate your honesty, you know, looking at it, and the fact that all these designs right here are, can completely change at some point in time, given your further analysis, as you go, as you dive deeper into the project.
That's absolutely true.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council. Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Manager, I'm looking at the letter, Mr. Manager, that the letter that we got, and I see three steps. I see the border parks, I see the city council, and I see the state two-thirds vote. So where does the conservation vote come in?
This letter doesn't accurately set out the CMR that sets out the process for it. So if you go to the CMR, you see the, the fuller steps that have to be taken. That's, it's, they didn't include it in the letter, but we did the, we, we know that what has to be done in Article 97 through the...
So this comes from a woman that works there for the state?
Yes.
And she, she skipped that step?
Apparently.
Okay, all right. Another question, if I could go to Mr. Bell, please. So with the Option 3, I think that Council Blanche was talking about, is that the option he said that had the, the swing space with 60 rooms and 25 students per room?
I, I didn't state the number of students per room, but yes, effectively, if we build a new fieldhouse, take down the fieldhouse.
So the swing space is, is by nature smaller than the rest, correct? Than the rest of the, the school would be? So you're talking about 1,500 kids that would be stuck in swing space for a period of time?
I'm not sure I understand.
60 times, 60 classrooms times 25 students per classroom, is that 1,500?
And then there's a utilization rate you'd apply to that, so it would actually be less.
Okay, and that's Option, that's Option 3.
Yeah, I think, I think we're trying to target close to a quarter of the student body if we could.
Well, a quarter is 800, this is 1,500. Okay, so I understand, okay. So Option 2, I think that's the one where people have the questions about the modular classrooms. Is the, there's a downtown renovation Option 2 that does not take the doctor's office? So how do we get to zero modular classrooms in that option?
Right. So that comes at the, the great expense, if you will, of finding a solution for the PE and athletic programs. Because if you do, you can clear the site, take down the fieldhouse, and you can build that same five-story, 50, 60-classroom new construction. So it does mean that, that athletic and PE programs would need the alternative, alternative, we've talked about some form of temporary, maybe inflatable roof-type structure to create gross space, large space, but also, you know, changing what the programs might be.
So an inflatable roof for a gym is an option?
It's part of a solution, temporary solution.
Okay. And so, and again, to refer back, I think it was Mrs. Krieger that asked you, this is only concept, so you could come back in this period of time and say the modules are back on, on the, on the option. I mean, you want to guarantee right now in front of everybody here that no modulators for Option 2 or 3 will ever be used?
Thanks for not making me guarantee, or you want me to guarantee?
Yeah, I mean, can you do that? Because you went from 30 to 40 to zero.
I can't guarantee you. I'm trying to be accurate to the conceptual level we're at, and conceptually, we've got a gross solution that would say no modulators.
So I guess there's one more question. Why is it so hard to say that Colley is the best site?
No, no, I, I think there's a misunderstanding. I'm not the only, only person representing the design team, I know people have said different things. It is the most viable site, absolutely, but I think that that has come out as whether that's the best educationally. We're just trying to be fair and objective and say it's, it's more than just, you know, an ideal building setup, that the location, the community's priorities have to weigh into this, transportation, other things. So I know it's been heard differently, or possibly, you know, been, been expressed inaccurately.
Thank you.
Councilor.
Thank you. I just, so I, first of all, I got a couple of questions, just to, I don't know if it goes to Perkins or Skanska, but when we look at Site Number 3, and I know earlier you said that all these drawings are just kind of holding spaces, it's not actually the building, but it's just holding the space. So my question is, why are we talking about the first thing of moving the fieldhouse? I thought the first, I thought that the plan, the educational plan is what's taken priority. So why wouldn't we be building a math and science building and putting the fieldhouse back in the same location? Like, why wouldn't that be the priority first, the, the classrooms, and get the kids over into a classroom, instead of building a fieldhouse? Why are we talking about that?
I, I think with all of these options, we're trying to meet the educational plan at the completion of construction. So we're not exactly phasing it so that we meet the most educational objectives first, we're trying to phase it so that it, it also has the least disruptions educationally, that includes PE and athletics, so...
But I mean, this, 10% of the kids do sports, maybe, whatever, you know? It's a small percentage that do sports, it's more the educational in my mind. All right, so that's just my thought. Is the Lord Building being, that's not being knocked down, that's just being gutted?
It's being gutted, right.
Okay. And then on the Colley site, it's a little bit cheaper and faster to build, but why do we have estimated city's share? Why is that higher?
I'll defer to the OPM for this. Some of it has to do with the granularity, if you will, of, of what's reimbursable and what is not.
Good evening. The answer to that question is that Mass School Building Authority caps the reimbursement at $312 a square foot. So if you look at your eligible costs and ineligible costs, they take that right off the top of the grant, then they do their calculation about reimbursement. And then, again, if you look at those dollars, anything over the 312 is 100% cost to the district. And, and each of these options, where there had been an estimate put together on our speculation about phasing, modulators required, the length of time, what we did is, we actually took it all, all the way to the end with what they call the 3011, which is the state's worksheet. Typically, you don't do that until you get into schematic design. We did it for all of the options, because we wanted the district and the city to be able to make an informed decision about the information that was available, that you may have an option that might be more expensive, total project cost, but it might be less expensive in terms of cost to the district. And so we really wanted to vet each one to see, you know, not only what the overall cost was, because you might think, oh, this is a better option for us, and then you find out, oh, but I'm not getting as much money back from the state as we thought. So that's why, why we did it that way.
All right, so let me ask you this. So at Colley, we're building brand-new. We're, we're potentially looking at a new pool, new auditorium, and then running water lines and sewer and stuff like that. If we redo the downtown site, 3 or 2, we're still doing a new fieldhouse, right? So new pool and everything. The only thing we're really not touching is the auditorium, but we're knocking more buil, we're gutting more buildings, and so why wouldn't that, in my mind, I think there's more work downtown than there is, there's more unreimbursable costs downtown than there are.
When you start looking at renovation projects, you're looking at a longer duration of time, and so you're paying for that onsite labor being there a longer period of time, working less efficiently. It's more efficient cost-wise and time-wise on, on a clean site, so to speak. With the renovation projects, because it's phased and occupied, and you're moving people around, you really, you know, have this puzzle of, how do we keep the school fully operational? Where can we make compromises or not? And, and that's a discussion that takes place with the educational leadership, and it's really about how, like, almost like a checkerboard, how do we keep moving the pieces around? The very first thing to do in concept is to create some excess space that's not available. And that excess space comes from either modulators or building something new. Now, the whole concept of taking the fieldhouse down so that you can build a bigger structure or create more capacity than what you would have just with the fieldhouse. For example, if you have five stories and you have 60 classrooms, now you've carved out enough space that will allow you to move a substantial number of students, so that now you can go into another part of the building and either renovate or do whatever you're gonna do with that.
Okay, but we're not getting reimbursed for, for gutting the two buildings down, are we?
It's all part of the project costs, yes. It's just that, that the...
Yeah, we aren't, though. Would you say we are getting reimbursed?
We do get reimbursed, but you, you get different percentages. I mean, there's a formula, and it will be different in every single option, that they'll look at how much is new and how much is, you know, demolished, and then how much is renovated. And, and that will change every time you change square footages in those calculations, it will move those percentages one way or the other.
All right. I understand what you're saying, but I don't follow it, because I just think there's more work downtown, which obviously there is.
There is more work downtown. I'm, I'm not sure, but maybe I'm not hearing your question.
Well, I just, I just can't understand why we're get, not getting reimbursed as much, but...
Oh, for, for more money on the new, new site? Well, because it exceeds that $312. Well, because it exceeds that $312 a square foot. I mean...
But downtown would, but renovation has cost you one and a half times more to renovate than to build brand-new.
I'm more than happy to show you the...
Well, I'll look at that.
...spreadsheet, so I can share that with you.
Excuse me, wait a second, wait a second. But the site costs are much more, correct?
I have to look up the site costs for each option.
Well, often, we know that. The site costs are more. Yeah, and those aren't reimbursable. So that's the big, you know, it's a lot more to run in a sewer line from Douglas Road to the new one. That's why it's not reimbursed, that's why the unreimbursable expenses is higher. It's mostly site work. And it's only, and it capped at 8% for site work.
Yeah.
So that's why you don't get reimbursed for the site work.
You're correct. You're not creating fields at the downtown site.
Right, right. Okay. All right. So let me just say that from what everybody else has said here tonight, you know, I don't think any of us want to do anything with eminent domain. But the downtown site, I think if you do a downtown site and you follow that education plan, that, you know, we obviously need more space, and you need to make a big, bigger campus. I think, obviously, the clear winner is building a site, a brand-new building off-site. No disruption, better for the kids, and better just all around for the city. And I think that that's what our goal is, is to make, as we've said, the best school we can for the next 50 years. And that's the point that we've been making since we started this, too. This building has to last us longer than 50 years. I mean, we're looking at a 70, 80-year project that's going to be updated. What we have downtown didn't, did not last the test of time, for sure. So to spend this amount of money and to do it right, we need to do our homework and make sure we do our due diligence and pick the best site, the best construction, and the best value for our money all around. So, you know, we're going to keep going. I agree with the motion to get, let's get going on the, what we need to do to make Colley Stadium, make sure that Colley Stadium is part of the plan. So I guess, you know, we're going to meet again, but as soon as we get going on that motion, the better. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. We've, just as far as the moving forward with the four options, is that our point person at the MSBA is an individual by the name of Kyle Brong, and we have talked to him. And what he said is that it's fine for us to move forward with the Colley option, even though there's that Article 97, because we still have time to hopefully cure the Article 97. So they don't put it, they don't put it aside. We still will be in the queue with all four options. Okay. Go ahead, Consul Elliot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I want to make in the form of an amendment to Consul Mercia's motion. I thought, whether it's friendly or not, I think it's important because Consul Mercia's motion is just to have the manager meet with the delegation?
No. Consul Mercia's motion is to have the City Council meet with the delegation to go over what's involved with Article 97 and what it would take to reverse Article 97. Not the city manager. The city manager can be there, but the motion was to have the City Council do that.
Okay. Well, I'd like to make an amendment. I don't object to that at all whatsoever, but I would like the manager and his staff to begin the process of preparing the home rule petition, as well as initiate the process with the Conservation Commission and the Board of Parks.
Consul, if I could, if I could suggest this as the amendment, I think that it's going to require more than just a home rule petition. At least, that's what I've been told. But what, what might be a good amendment would be to have the Law Department begin necessary proceedings in order to do the same thing. And if it is a home rule petition, then so be it. But my understanding this evening is that it's quite a bit more involved than just a home rule petition.
The manager's laid it out, and I did read CMR, and it's the Conservation Commission, the Board of Parks. So I think that we need to do this concurrently. So whether the Law Department or the City Manager, whatever way you want to do it, I, rather than just a meeting, I think it's important to proceed with literally the paperwork and the documentation to start moving this forward. And I think that shows SBA that we're serious and that we're going to proceed forward. So whatever the mechanism is, in addition to the meeting, we get to work here in the city.
If it's acceptable to you, then the amendment, I think, should be that to have the Law Department begin doing the necessary paperwork and moving in that direction. Okay. Is there a second to the amendment?
Yeah.
Seconded by Consul Belanger on the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Consul Rock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last thing I'll say. Mr. Manager, is there a way, you know, it's a $1.4 million grant we received back in 99, 2000? According to the letter, it was $1.4 million?
I believe that was the total grant, yes.
So, just out of curiosity, if we paid that back to the state, would we be all set, covered, to go forward?
I don't have an answer to that, but based upon your previous comments about what happened in other municipalities, I'm certainly going to reach out. You know, I served with Matt Beaton, the Secretary of this department, so I will reach out to Matt Beaton himself and find out what we can do to...
Thank you.
...cure the issue. Any further discussion on the amendment?
Roll call.
Roll call on the amendment?
Consul Leahy?
Yes.
Consul Leary?
Yes.
Consul Mercy?
Yes.
Consul Milonazo?
Yes.
Consul Rock?
Yes.
Consul Samaris?
Consul Belanger?
Yes.
Consul Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Eight yeas.
Any further discussion on the, on the main motion as amended? Roll call.
Consul Leahy?
Yes.
Consul Leary?
Yes.
Consul Mercy?
Yes.
Consul Milonazo?
Yes.
Consul Rock?
Yes.
Consul Samaris?
Consul Belanger?
Yes.
Consul Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Eight yeas.
If there's no objection, I just have two or three questions that I'd like to ask before we get to the conclusion of the meeting. Just following up on Consul Leahy's questioning regarding the reimbursement, it's my understanding from the figures that you put forth at the meeting that was held to, by the Building Committee, to have them endorse the four options, that the reimbursement for, for the Colley site was 55% and that the reimbursement for the other three options was in the low 60s, which I think is lower than what we had anticipated at the outset of this, this process. Is that correct? Just about correct?
I would, I would have to look at it, but to your point, yes, that, that in general, we found that the, that the reimbursement was between 55 and, I believe, 60, 62%.
Okay. And then on option two, I understand how you can do option three because of the eminent domain taking, how you do this little domino thing, and so you wouldn't need the modulators. But I don't understand how that works for option two. And I've heard, first of all, that we needed modulators, then that we didn't need modulators, and then the latest was maybe we're going to need modulators. But can you explain to me how it would be that we would not need modulators on option two?
Substantial modular, basically, a solution to the PE athletics is what really makes this work. So if, much like option three, where we can build a new fieldhouse and move students in so they can use that, so it clears the site, in this case, we don't have an expanded site, but we're saying if we have an alternative to PE and athletics, and that might be a large portable or inflatable-type structure, it could be changing the programs, it's the same net effect that if you are, if you find an alternative, you can take away the fieldhouse...
I understand.
...and build the classrooms.
I'm good. Thank you. And so when you gave the site estimates last week to the Building Committee and also to the City Council, we were told at that time that they included modulators. So did those estimates for each of the options include modulators? Or was that a mistake and they did not include the cost of modulators?
No, what we did is we, as a group, we looked at the phasing and tried to come up with the best solution there. And the information that was presented on Tuesday included the modulators appropriately. So we, we had the estimates, we had it carried in the, in the modulators. We had the modulators carried in the estimate, as noted.
Okay. Thank you. So is there any, anything for Consul Milonazo?
Thank you. I just have a question to follow up on the, on the modules. I was on the tour today with the mayor and Consul Elliot and Consul Belanger. And the project in Winchester, which, by the way, started out quite similar to what we're talking about here, they were looking at moving off-site, going to an acreage that was on the border of Winchester and Lexington. They chose to keep the high school at its current location. The high school's about 100, I'm sorry, 260,000 square feet, so this is two and a half times what they did. They ended up getting a 42.92% reimbursement on their project. But at the end of the day, they ended up having, and their population, as I want to say, about 1,800 students. They had 36 modular classrooms, which we toured today, and again, speaking just for myself, again, they were air-conditioned, they were clean, they were up to code. A lot of the parents who were apprehensive in the beginning, I understand, had, now have no issues over the last three years. They had, in 2015, they had eight class, modular classrooms, and 2016, they had 16. And now in 2017, their project is ending this August, they have, they have 36. I guess my question is, if we end up, you know, after you go through this whole detailed process, needing modules, modular classrooms, are we going to have twice as many as they had in Winchester? I mean, again, in Winchester, the school's 1,800 students, and they ended up having 36 modular classrooms. I mean, that's, that's a lot.
Yeah. I can only say that it's not exactly scalable because with a building of the size that you have, and even the vintage, there is capacity that can be created on the interior that may not have been the case in Winchester.
Okay. Okay. Well, again, at the end of the day, if we end up going with a downtown location, hopefully, we won't need modular classrooms, so...
Okay. Any further discussion? Consul Leahy?
I just want to make one comment. When Consul Milonazo mentioned the reimbursement rates, I guess this is just a comment, but when we started this project, we were saying that we can get up to, what, 75%, 80%? So I just don't understand. We go to Colley Stadium, we build a brand-new school, say, how did they not honor? I mean, I know you said that there's limits, but it's very deceiving when you say you go into a community. Every community is different. And then we say you can give it up to 80%, and then you end up getting 50% back on your money. I mean, I just don't know how you'd get away with that.
Mr. Manager?
I mean, it's just a comment.
Basically, it's, it's basically another formula. We're entitled to be reimbursed 79% of reimbursable expenses. But unfortunately, there are expenses that are unreimbursable. For example, they will only reimburse 79% of construction costs up to $312 per square foot, when in reality, the construction costs are $500 or more per square foot. They will, they will only, they will not reimburse for swimming pools, for theaters, for things like that, modular classrooms. So eminent domain. So as you look at the real figures and the caps that are imposed, is that, that brings down the actual reimbursement rate into, as Mary Ann said earlier, into the 60 percentile or...
It's very deceiving that you don't read the fine print. And here we are, trying to do something good, something great for the community, and you got to read the fine print because... And, I mean, if this is going to take us a couple of years to, to build, or to get started and then build, so maybe we should put in a petition to raise the amount of money, because it's just not acceptable in today's, today's rates.
Maybe that can be part of the discussion with the delegation next week.
Yeah, we should do that, too.
No, I think, I think for this project, at the outset, everybody was hearing that it was going to be 75% and at most, it was going to be 250 million. And now we're at 350 million, and we're down into the low 60s or 55% reimbursement. It's expensive. It's, it's...
No, it is, but it's also deceiving, so...
Consul Milonazo?
Thank you. I don't know if it's appropriate at this time, Mr. Mayor, but to make a motion to recommend to the full council at the February 28th meeting that we move forward with these four options.
Second?
We have a motion on the floor to approve the recommendation of the Building Committee.
To the full council.
Seconded by Consul Elliot. Discussion, Consul Leary.
Just a quick follow-up, and I forgot to ask this through you to the city manager. I know we discussed a little bit about the non-reimbursables, about, let's say, the pool and the auditorium. Do we have any dialogue regarding if we did get donations regarding? I know initially, the question was, if somebody came out with an X amount of dollars for, you know, the swimming pool. It wasn't, we would be held in harm financially to do that. Did we look into that to see if that's actually an accurate statement? Because I'm hearing conflicting issues on that. I mean, I don't know. And if it is, is there a way we can go around with the negoti... I mean, one of the things I think you were talking about is negotiations. You're talking about the science labs would be 1,400 square feet. I think I'm getting that right, but we're going to bring it down to 1,350 or something to help negotiate to get a better deal in terms of an auditorium and any of these options. Remember, that was part of the, the School Committee Education Plan. Is there any flexibility on that, or is that something that's just, it is what it is?
Yeah, we looked into that about if you get donations or fundraisers, they take it right off the top. But we'll certainly keep that in the mix as further discussions with the SBA down the road.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. Oh, one last thing. I heard a comment, and I forgot where I heard it, that they're actually going to have a meeting discussing to increase the square footage because of such a disparity. Is that true, or is that just wishful, have a wishful thinking?
My sources tell me that this summer, that they will be having that discussion of increasing the reimbursement rate for the square footage cost. But based upon the current economy, I don't see that reimbursable rate going up exponentially. So I think we're, we're still being conservative with our estimates. Consul Rock.
Mr. Manager, did you just say earlier tonight that we have to have this done by February 25th to stay on schedule?
February 28th to stay on schedule.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Roll call.
Consul Leahy?
Yes.
Consul Leary?
Yes.
Consul Mercy?
Yes.
Milonazo?
Yes.
Consul Rock?
Yes.
Consul Samaris?
Yes.
Consul Belanger?
Yes.
Consul Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Eight yeas.
Consul, try to set that meeting up before the next City Council meeting, so possibly the Monday before, if we can do that with the delegation, and see how everybody's available. All right. If there's no other comments or suggestions, the chair would entertain a motion adjourned by Consul Rock, seconded by Consul Milonazo. All in favor, all opposed? So vote.
Good job, Ed.
Thanks, Mike. You, too.